From KZZH in Eureka, California, this is The Civic Union. I am Aaron Donaldson. Today is July 3rd, which makes it an especially important time of year to bring to mind the fact that we are broadcasting from the unceded lands of the Wiat peoples, which includes the Wiat tribe, the Bear River Rancheria, and the Blue Lake Rancheria. The persistence of the Wiat peoples to remain in relationship with these lands amidst the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism compels us to spread awareness to our inner and extended community regarding the true history of this space. This means finding ways to hold ourselves accountable for the continuation of settler colonial acts, which neglects to include the voices and histories and the needs of these tribes. It also means reflecting individually on our own land occupation practices and working to find significant ways to give the land back. As always here on The Civic Union, we do want to hear from you. You can drop us an email to thecivicunion@gmail.com. You can also tweet us right now @civic__union on Twitter. We will read and respond to appropriate tweets and emails on the air. Why not give it a try? You would be the first. That's @civic__union on Twitter or thecivicunion, that's all one word, at gmail.com. Today, we are talking to Katie Texas-Moulton, who is a working artist and nonprofit administrator who was elected to represent Eureka's 2nd ward in December of 2020. She has labored for nearly 20 years to serve Humboldt, including working as a youth street outreach worker with The Raven Project, running the Kinetic Universe nonprofit for 10 years. She also has an ACE, serving as the artistic director of the Ink People Center for the Arts and running an empowering summer camp for middle school girls where they never turn a camper away because they can't pay. Well, moved here from Houston, Texas and immediately put down roots deep into our community. Katie, thank you so much for taking the time to be with us today.
Thanks so much for the invitation.
It's been a little bit of a circus to get the interview up and running. We really do appreciate your patience and just being here with us to get it going. You answered the first question. Were you born in Houston, Texas? Is that where you were from?
I was born in Houston, technically Katie, Katie, Texas, which is just outside of Houston.
Yeah, I got family there. So we talked about that a little bit. Very cool. What's your first political memory?
My first political memory? Well, I come from a very large, very conservative family. I'm the youngest of 17 cousins. And so I don't know that I ever paid much attention to politics growing up. And then I moved out on my own and into downtown Houston and met some folks that were engaging around fighting against the death penalty. And really, it was just like some friends were involved and I kind of started going to meetings and hanging out and making posters like, here, I can be useful. I can draw. And then I found these folks were promoting and publishing a book called Stolen Lives, which was a collection of people who had either been executed by the state or killed in police custody. And I started working with those folks against this situation that I thought was an injustice. At the same time, we're also doing a lot of Food Not Bombs, feeding folks, you know, taking food that was going to waste donated from local restaurants and putting them out there. But the whole time, I always felt like I was working against the things that I didn't want, rather than working for the things I do want. I don't, it took me a while to put that together, but it's very frustrating. It's not, it's not satisfying to fight against the death penalty in Texas in the 90s. It was, yeah. And, you know, bless the people who were doing it then and still do it today. For sure. But I was, it was crushing. So when I moved to Humboldt County, I decided to take a moment and like reset and start thinking about what is it that I want to fight for as opposed to against? And that's why I started getting involved in the great organizations I found here that I'm still involved with today.
I really appreciate this distinction in terms of, you know, we can look at politics of all the things that make us angry and there's plenty of things to be upset about. And we need people to fight those things. But there's a whole other branch of politics, which is like trying to get stuff done. Is that pretty much what got you into local politics? Was that, that's what it sounds like?
Well, kind of. I had no intention to move into local politics, but I have a background with youth in the area, working at the Ink People as the artistic director and running the Mars Project there. I worked with at-risk youth. I was also an outreach worker with The Raven Project. Like you mentioned, working with disenfranchised and homeless youth and adults in the area. And I have a lot of sympathy for folks who either don't feel like their voices being heard, or they don't feel like it matters, even if it is. And in 2020, I was approached by some folks in the neighborhood that said, have you ever considered going into politics? We're looking for a candidate, you know, a progressive candidate for city council. And I was like, no, I don't, I'm not good at filtering sometimes. And that seemed to be a key component in diplomacy, or at least in getting stuff done. You don't want to make too many people mad because it's counterproductive. But then I heard the candidate's statement of the person who was running unopposed. And I just heard this, the whole thing seemed to be about the folks in the neighborhood where I live, my neighbors, my working class neighbors, like as the problem that it just didn't seem respectful. And it's like, I know these people. I've worked with these, you know, these families and my neighbors for many years, mostly through the kids, you know, working with youth and transitional age youth. And I was like, these folks deserve a representative on council who thinks of them with respect and who, you know, has a genuine roots in the neighborhood. Not that she didn't. Of course she did. We all have to live where we, where we represent. But I felt like I would do a better job of representing the actual people who actually live in the neighborhood and, you know, deserve representation. And so that's what got me into it. It's kind of looked at, I was like, this lady does not need to be representing Eureka's most diverse community.
It's interesting because hypothetically, I could be someone that's already kind of engaged, working with various communities and things. And that's political action, like no bones about it. But at the same time, there's this point where it comes time to like run for an election and to serve like on a city council, which is what you're doing now. And that's typically a very different step. Would you suggest that that's one that most people should take? You said that you yourself were worried about your ability to perhaps filtered ways? Is it easier outside of the halls of government? Maybe not. I don't know. Is that a jump that more people should consider, do you think?
I don't know. I think you have to want to serve your community in the particular way that is being asked. You know, being elected is different from using my other skills to benefit the community. I mean, it's a totally different skill set. So for me, I think it's about the job itself. Do you want to do that job? Or do you want to benefit our community in a different way? Because there's all kinds of great ways to help out. And this is just a particular one. It takes a certain skill set. But it's also been really clear to me from day one that this is a job intended for a regular person from the neighborhood. That I'm like a mom that lives by a park. Like I am not a professional politician, you know, and I don't have to be. And I don't have to. You can come into this work and immediately have access to everything you need to do it. There's a big learning curve, but, but the staff and everybody is very good about making sure that I had everything I needed. They were good at answering questions. One thing that impressed me right off the bat is that they were very good at maintaining the appropriate boundaries of the direction of direction. So like, I have to ask the staff, how does this happen? I have, you know, I don't, I don't understand what is the mechanism that we're using to do, you know, a goal A. But, and that's fine. They can explain it to me all day long. But if I say, what do you think should happen? They're like, I have an opinion, but it's your decision. You know, and it's not my decision. I'm one of five. It's never my decision. But they, they're very good at, you know, making sure that I understood like what the job entails and what I needed to be doing and not taking any of that away from me because I didn't necessarily know any better. You know, does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Because the, there's an organizational chart for the City of Eureka. I love it. And it's at the top, it's the citizens. And then under that, it's the council. And under that, it's the city manager, city clerk, city attorney. And then under that, it's everybody who works for the city. But that's, that's how it works. I take my direction from the citizens. I get an employee review once every four years.
Yeah. And by putting the people at the top of that chart, it really emphasizes the meaning of having folks that are not professional politicians, but are actually parents, you know, folks that know what it means to have a working city council step up and do that job. I think that makes a lot of sense. It's good to hear there's infrastructure there to support that. It sounds like there's quite a bit of staff there that helps you out.
Yeah. And there's also the League of California Cities, which is a separate organization. It's actually a lobbying organization, but they go through a lot of effort to train council members. There's conferences, but then there's orientations and there's classes you can take. And they like, just really helped me to understand the job. And that's, that's like their whole thing. Or at least they're the whole thing for new council orientation.
So if I'm out there and I don't think I'm a politician, that doesn't necessarily mean I can't be useful to city councils.
Yeah, it's a, it's a job for regular folks from the neighborhood. That's kind of the point.
A lot of Robert's Rules of Order and stuff.
We use something slightly modified. It's Rosenberg's Rules of Something. Oh, the wonderful thing about that is that I get to work with all of these incredibly competent and knowledgeable professionals who have been doing this work for decades. And we have a parliamentarian in the room in the form of our city attorney, who is very good about going, excuse me, you might not want to walk down that road. It's like, thank you.
Full voice from the side there.
Yeah, exactly.
Very cool. How did you get into local politics? Just like, take us through the first step and the second step. What does that look like?
Okay, so I was the, I have to go back a few steps. I was the artistic director at the Ink People and very happy where I was. And then this really cool opportunity came up to be the director of Scrap Humboldt, which is a creative reuse center. It's like rescuing crayons from the landfill in Microcosm. And I was hired to be the director of Scrap Humboldt. Three days before the first shelter in place order, and the very first thing I had to do was cancel the big annual fundraiser that made up a big chunk of the budget. And then it was all very complicated and very, very, very bad timing. Well, I did end up, the Scrap Portland or Scrap USA, who was the organization actually running Scrap Humboldt, you know, ultimately, everybody tried really hard. They tried really hard, but in the end, they told me to dismantle it. So that's what I took the building, I took the business apart, stripped it to the bones. While I was doing that, there was this conversation going on about, like this is through the summer. And I get to, in my summer camp that year, I run a summer camp and I, we couldn't do it, of course. And we, so we were busy putting, my staff had put all of our activities into a box. Like we'd figured out a way to make it kits you could take home and worksheets you could take home. And then the landlord of Scrap Humboldt, the Arcata Marsh Commons, very generously let me use the now empty Scrap Humboldt, several thousand square feet, to put my staff in so we could pack these boxes. So we've got, you know, ladies in there, folks in there, masks on, spread out at these tables in this big, huge room with all the doors and windows open. This is like summer 2020. And, you know, we're doing that. And I'm like trying to get that project together. And as far as I knew, I had another week to decide if I was going to run. There was some weirdness with the deadline, had to do with whether or not an incumbent was running, yada, yada. So I knew I had a week. I'm going to get these boxes out. I'm going to sweep this floor. I'm going to go home. I'm going to drink a beer in the bathtub. And then I'm going to make a decision about whether or not I really want to. Well, at that point, I didn't even know. I didn't even know if I really wanted to run. And I'm in the middle of this day and Leslie Castellano calls and she says, turns out that deadline's today at five. And so I, okay, great. I called my husband in a very fast conversation about, you know, like genuinely whether or not this is a good idea. And then we decided, you know, I decided I want to do it. He supported me in that. And then I went inside and there's my lovely camp people in there. I was like, okay. They all knew I was thinking about it, but I hadn't, that I had the minutes to make the decision. I said, turns out the deadline's today at five and I'm going to go for it. And they're like, yeah, Texas, go save the world. Woo-hoo. So I'm driving down back to Eureka, recording my candidate's statement on a, like dictating it into my cell phone. Leslie Castellano actually ran around the ward and got the signatures that I needed. We met up, we got the paperwork together, we turned it in. So there was this initial impetus of seeing somebody running to represent my neighborhood and my neighbors that I didn't think was going to do a good job. And then the sort of, I guess, rush of like, I had just gotten my dream job and then stripped it to the bones. I couldn't even go to my summer camp this year. I had no idea where I was going from there. But, and here's this opportunity. Well, you know, it's something I thought I could do, somewhere I thought I could do some good. And it seemed like something to fill in to the moment. I wasn't able to do so many things. I wasn't able to do, and I was able to do this. And I think that, just to reach back to that beginning of politics question, I think making a difference within your grasp is like really good advice. And this is something that I can do here. And I can look at, you know, the bigger picture and the national picture, the global picture, the human picture, and just think that there's so little effect that we can have. But here's something that's within my grasp. It was something that I felt like I could, I could dive into and I could be useful.
We're talking to Katie Moulton, who represents Ward 2 of the City of Eureka in Eureka, California. I really appreciate this idea of making a difference like within your grasp. That's, that's very immediate. It's very practical. And we talk a lot to the other colleagues that you work with and some other folks. And they all kind of emphasize that there's a lot of local need and not a lot of folks like doing this kind of proactive work, at least at the city level, to kind of step up. Because it's a lot. Was it a lot to get that, that statement done? Like that's, mirating a statement is, you do a little broadcast work maybe is all we'll say.
I do a lot of talking anyway. That's for sure. I give a lot of speeches.
But like a candidate's statement might be intimidating to people. And some of, you know, it sounds like potentially a lot of paperwork, like.
Yeah, you know, the, the statement itself, I feel like I just kind of spoke from the heart about why I wanted to represent the folks in the neighborhood and what kind of good I think I can do or why I think I'm qualified to do some good, or, you know, to, to attempt to take on that trust, to try and do some good. I might have done, I might have worried about it a little more if I'd like read some candidate's statements and fretted. It was, it was too rushed. I was too hurried. You know, the thing that I did fret about is that I've been working in the community under the name Katie Texas. I've been making art. I've got an ACE Kinetic Team. I've got like, you know, murals up. I've got a reputation and a, and a reputation among nonprofit business folks. You know, I'd been doing small business consulting as the artistic director of the Ink People for many years. And I had to decide whether to run as Katie Texas or to run as Katie Moulton, my married name. And I was like, well, I didn't want anyone to think that it was like performance art.
Right.
I didn't want anybody to think that this was, this was a joke or a play, that this is, this is dead serious. You know, we're talking about people's health and wellbeing and livelihoods. And I wanted to make sure that folks knew I was approaching this as seriously as I approach anything.
What's been the biggest struggle for you? Or what, like, what's the biggest challenge you've had to overcome?
The biggest challenge, I think, is that this is a part-time job and it's supposed to be a part-time job, but it could really easily be full-time or more. There is from like, there's from a lot to a crazy lot to like an infinite amount of work that I could be doing. And I just have to just set my schedule and set my boundaries and, and sometimes just lean on my colleagues who are focusing on something that I think is really, really important. And I just have to trust that they're doing that work and, and not delegate it, but you know, like my, my co-counselors especially, you know, may have an area of focus that I, I feel passionate about, but I just have to kind of like let them do that work so that I can focus on the things that I can do and we can all get more done. Yeah, not doing all of it all the time, you know, getting time to make dinner for my family.
There's potentially so many things within our grasp that we could make a difference. Like, you know, the macaroni box that has to get opened. And for sure. What was it like campaigning? Can you take us through a couple memorable moments that you had from the election?
Yeah. So I was campaigning in 2020 and everything was on Zoom all of a sudden. Everybody's new to Zoom. I think really it was incredibly, like weirdly lucky. I was able to reach bigger audiences because people were looking to those online platforms to find out stuff and to meet people. And there were so many forums that year that were all online, not, not just the League of Women Voters, which I was used to, but all these other organizations that were doing Zoom forums. And people were like participating in them because they were home and they were bored and they were engaged. And that's great. And I got to probably reach a bigger audience with less effort than other folks would have had to do. I didn't do any door knocking that year, which is, feels weird. Like council member, you know, you're supposed to go out and literally meet everyone in the ward. I'm happy to do that, but I couldn't that year. People get mad at you. You come up the property. Yeah. So, so that was definitely interesting. And it kind of was like, like a secret cheat because I got to do all of these forums with, you know, with the webcam and the microphone and everything, but I also had a Google window open. And I was able, not that there are any, any questions in those forums where it's like, what's the capital of Mac? You know, if you could just Google the answer real quick. But I would be able to have my notes and, and have, you know, web search open if somebody, if a question was confusing or referenced something and I wasn't really sure about the reference, I could pop that up. And I still have to speak about my opinions and my principles and my background. So you can't just like pull, pull answers off the internet. But it was good to have that reference. And I feel like there's a lot of pressure to being on TV, to being in the studio, to being, you know, present in the room with folks. That's a different kind of feeling. And not having to do that and getting to reach so many people at the same time was, was good. It was, it was easier than I think it would have been otherwise.
From KZZH in Eureka, California, this is The Civic Union. I am Dr. Aaron Donaldson. Noted historian Roxanne Dunbar Ortiz says in an Indigenous Peoples' History of the United States that we celebrate the Fourth of July without a hint of tragedy in this country. You don't have to do that way. We can remember that we are broadcasting from the unceded lands of the Wiat people, that the history of this region is complex and that all of us could do more to find meaningful ways to be accountable for our continuing settler colonial acts, which neglect to include the voices and histories and needs of the tribes that surround us. And we can reflect individually on our own land occupation practices and work to find significant ways to give the land back. Today, we're talking to Katie Moulton, who represents Ward 2 for the City of Eureka. Katie, just the last segment, you were talking to us about how when you came on to the city council, you were a parent, you were a director of all these other, you know, organizations, you're doing so many different things, but you really did not know like what it meant to be a city council member. And you said that there were like trainings and orientations. Can you walk us through maybe one or two of those, just like specifically which stood out or helped?
Yeah, the League of California Cities does some orienting for council members. We take a, a whole thing on the Brown Act, clearly, which is a, a big chunk of how, of like operations, like how, how the business of the people actually gets done. And the Brown Act lays out how all that has to happen in public, you know, like what the rules are specifically, basically to make sure that the public's business is done in public. But in learning about that, I definitely learned a lot about the actual, you know, structure of meetings and how, how we get our information and how we make our decisions. It seems when you're watching a meeting, I don't know if it was, if it's totally clear that this, that's the conversation we're having. That's the whole conversation. That's, that's us deliberating this and asking each other questions and asking the experts questions and listening to the public's comments on it and then asking more questions and then having discussions, all in these, you know, Rosenberg's Rules kind of like structured ways, which can feel stilted and weird. But just getting that, but that is, that is how we're doing it, that we, and then we can come in with one idea. We, we are supposed to come in without our mind made up, that that is a big piece of it, that we're supposed to take in all of this information, including our own perspective and our own impression of the folks of the neighborhood. And we're supposed to go into the room with an open mind and then have these conversations and then make a decision together. And that's what I got out of that orienting. They also have, you know, at the conference, they have new council member stuff and they, oh, that first year, because we were online, instead of going to a conference in Sacramento or something, they did a play, a Zoom play, which was really funny. And I forget what it's called, but it was like the worst town in California. And all these, all these folks who are really genuinely, you know, electeds or city staff, managers, attorneys, things like that. They all played the, the leaders of this town and they were all doing everything exactly wrong. And so that's how they taught us, you know, about like our relationship to the decisions and our relationship to the information and how the decisions get made and what's appropriate, what's not appropriate. And as the lawyers like to say, the law is the floor, not the ceiling.
I feel like that should be enshrined in Congress and some of these other places.
It all is, it often seems like it's the other way around, isn't it?
Right next to e pluribus unum, the law is the floor, not the ceiling.
Right, yeah. No, we start here. We go up from there.
And don't push the boundary. Like rely on it. Okay.
Right. Yeah.
Well, it sounds like there's all sorts of ways that they get you to learn the rules. That's very cool.
Well, the city staff also provides a lot of reference materials and a lot of instructions specific to Eureka and the town charter. Our city clerk slash assistant city manager, Pam Powell, is just incredible fond of information and perspective. And the whole staff is amazingly helpful.
Very cool. Try to get Pam Powell on the show at some point. That would be a fun person to talk to.
Well, she's delightful.
Very cool. You said also, when we were on our break, that if, if there were a way that folks wanted to get involved, boards and committees would be a really good way to get involved.
Oh, yeah.
What's the difference between the two?
Okay, so you were talking about, you know, should people try and go for office? And office, and I was like, you know, office is one kind of job. It's one skill set. There is a less, some boards and commissions that have volunteers from the community that, that make decisions. And these are like the, I can mention a few. I don't think there's openings on these specifically, but there's like dozens of boards and commissions. And they're the ones who are, like the design review, for example. For some reason, the only one I can think of off the top of my head, because I paint murals and I have to go talk to them occasionally, or used to. But they're making, you know, architectural decisions about the aesthetics of town. The Arts and Culture Commission is made up of artists and art entrepreneurs who are, you know, making decisions about where the city interacts with that part of the community. There's the, the COP Board, the Community Oriented Police Practices. Oh, is that the right? I don't remember. Anyway, that's a, it's our citizen review board for the EPD. So you have a, a group of actual, you know, citizens, non-police. There's one retired police officer on there who have the power to review incidents inside of EPD and complaints and open up procedure questions. So there's lots of opportunities like this where you can go and some of them are Brown Act positions. Some of them are, so they'll have a, a meeting agenda that is publicized and then you might meet on the, in council chambers. So there's a certain amount of like pomp, you know, or like to it. But some of them are far more casual. But if you want to get involved and you have time and brain energy to put into something, most of them involve, you know, reading up on the decision that you're making and talking to people and trying to work stuff out. And those are all just regular citizens doing that work. And at every level, the local government is taking its direction from these citizens. So the world and our city are run by whomever shows up.
How do folks get involved with those boards? Do you have to get elected? Do you just put your name in a hat?
Some of them are, are going to be relying on you having certain skills or experience or profession that's relevant, or that, you know, gives you a base of knowledge. But for all of them, you would go to the city website, look up boards and commissions, talk to Pam Powell, see where the, see where the vacancies are. There's a boards and commission page on the website, I'm sure, list all the commissions. And occasionally, we discuss what opening Um, list all the commissions and occasionally we discuss what openings are there. Uh, talking to some, some commission commissioners are appointed by the mayor. Um, some are appointed in other circumstances. So you just gotta kind of look at each different situation.
Yeah. Is this, uh, as far as like the boards and, uh, committees and commissions are concerned, that's not compensated work? Or does it have compensation involved with it?
I don't know.
May or may not.
Uh, yeah, may or may not.
Interesting. Uh, this is just kind of a big broad question. Like walk us through a typical city council meeting. Like what happens when you all get together?
Well, um, before the public meeting, we usually have a closed session. Um, that's where we, the counselors meet with, um, the staff and the attorney. And we discuss things like, uh, property negotiations or litigation, things that we need to know about or make decisions about or give direction on that are not able to be open to the public yet, ongoing lawsuits or something like that. Um, personnel matters. Uh, and they feed us during the closed session. Uh, because it happens at five o'clock and everybody's usually just got off work and we're about to go into a council meeting, which is going to take up the rest of our evening. They, um,
Pack good sandwiches or is it a?
Uh, we, it's, it's a variety. It's always, always something local though. That's for sure.
It ought to be.
Yeah. Um, and they drink, we're drinking local coffee up in there too.
There you go.
Got the, got the muddy waters. Oh, well, we got a lot of, they have some variety.
Yeah.
I like the muddy waters. Um, then leave it to me to get hung up on the coffee. I'm always drinking coffee right before the meeting. It's just to like stay alert all the way till sometimes nine or 10 or 11. Um, okay. So then after a closed session, quick break, and then we head into the chambers where, um, the public is usually waiting, the officers are there, the, the leadership is there from the departments. Like the fire chief is always there, the police chief is always there. Um, the director, uh, of different departments would be there if they have, um, something on the agenda. And then we go onto the agenda, the beginning of the month, uh, Mayor Bregel gives like you have been giving, uh, land acknowledgement, uh, to, because, um, to discuss or to acknowledge that Eureka is called Jaru Gigi in the,
I was looking for that. I'm gonna find it for today. I appreciate it.
Yeah, Jaru Gigi in Solatluck. Uh, and so we do the land acknowledgement and then we'll go through the agenda, which usually starts off with the fluffy friendly things. Uh, proclamations, acknowledgement of the local heroes, kids doing something interesting. Um, maybe the sister city project comes in and we have a visitor online from, uh, our sister city of Kimi Su Japan. Um, and that's, so that's where a lot of the sort of ceremonial things happen. Um, usually so that they can then leave, you know, and not have to stick around for all the boring stuff.
Hopefully just not a lot of haranguing in those moments. Everyone can agree that we clap.
Right. We're like, it's good job, kids. We like the firefighters. Thank you, coast guard. It's national, you know, tip your letter carrier week. Um, moving on. Then, uh, and the mayor has announcements, they'll, she'll do something, you know, either before proclamations or proclamations are right in there. And sometimes staff reports are in there. It'd be, um, the city's marketing firm coming up to talk about how many different magazines all over the world are running articles about the skywalk. And isn't that cool? Uh, and then after the, the fun, uh, the, you know, the ceremonial things, we move into public comment. And this is where the public has the opportunity to come and talk about anything that's not on the agenda. So is there a moment to just raise like, hey, this pothole has been in front of my house for a year. I lost a dog in there. Um, and, uh, you know, lots of stuff gets brought up there that can then end up on the agenda later. And there's definitely a certain amount of, um, venting of, that happens in public comment, either about stuff that has to do with the city, or sometimes it's just stuff that doesn't have to do with the city at all. And we, you know, hear folks airing their grievances about state and national politics, about culture, about the decline of Western civilization. Um, and, uh, you know, that's their moment. Uh, that's a, a useful moment for folks to feel like they can have their grievances heard by someone in power. Even if we can't, like literally can't do anything about the thing that they wish we could do something about. Uh, after that, we move into the business of the people. Um, and it comes in different sections and different flavors. There's public hearings where we have to, you know, um, decide on something, whether or not something is going to happen with the input of the public. And that's where you'll find things like, um, you know, are we going to change this street into a one-way or not? That has to be a public hearing, um, things like that. And then we go into the consent calendar, which is like this whole big chunk of stuff that we decide in all in one motion. And it's all this fiddly routine things, uh, destroying records that are at the, you know, 10-year or whatever year date it is where they're supposed to be destroyed. Um, you know, uh, paying this bill that we owe, that we have already agreed to pay, things like that all fall under there. But if we, um, are looking at that consent calendar during our agenda reviews or, um, at any point, and we think like, this is something that requires conversation, then we can pull an item from the consent calendar. Um, for example, at the last meeting, there was an item on the consent calendar, which was extremely routine. Uh, but council, we got it. We pulled it because council member Bauer works for the agency that is involved. And so just out of an abundance of caution, he recused himself. And so that item had to be pulled from the agenda so that he could do that. And then we vote on the, you know, the other clump of stuff. And then we have the discussion about the agenda item that needed to be pulled out and then we move on. Um, then we'll have reports and action items. The staff regularly provides us with reports, um, of just what's going on. Uh, we recently did our big budget review. Uh, which, uh, finance director Malar kind of like breaks into chunks for us. So he doesn't put everyone to sleep. Uh, he's very entertaining and it's all very interesting, um, but it does go on for a while. So he kind of breaks it into little sections. So we can, um, digest it in so that the public can too. Uh, and this is our opportunity to ask questions so that we understand what's going on. And so that we get the best, most complete picture of what's happening and can make the best decisions possible. And something I noticed when I went in to the meetings for the first time is that some of the council members would ask a question that I know they know the answer to, you know, um, but they're doing it so that that information is in the conversation on the record in this moment. Um, so that kind of shifted my gears around making the conversation about, um, or making my participation in the conversation about me understanding. And, um, shifting it so that I am helping to communicate the bigger picture of what's happening. Uh, and making sure that all of that, everything that is relevant to the conversation has been said. Um, if that means I've asked a question or if I brought something up, whether it's a question of staff or the experts or my fellow council members, uh, just making sure that everything that needs to be on the table is on the table. Um, so then hopefully when somebody is going back through these records to figure out why we made a certain decision, um, then that it's all there. It's not, it's not opaque.
Folks that listen to KZZH Access Humboldt will know that we do air these meetings on our airwaves and you can listen. And I have heard debates about whether or not certain streets should be a one-way or two-way.
Yeah.
And, um, it's all pretty important and folks can listen to those conversations for the record, on the record, right here, uh, on KZZH LP 96.7. We'll have more with Katie Texas Moulton right after this. From KZZH in Eureka, California, this is the Civic Union. I am Dr. Aaron Donaldson. And today I'm talking to Katie Texas Moulton, who represents Ward Two of the city of Eureka, California. We've talked a little bit about your background, uh, getting into politics as a normal person, not professional politician. And we just had a great conversation about what it means to, you know, work with the city and how you get to learn that job. We just want to end, uh, with a quick chat about, you know, like the issues that matter to you. And one of the things that you said that I'm really pumped about is that you're interested in utilizing our arts and cultural resources as an economic driver. You directed the Ink People, you directed Scrap Humboldt briefly and very important time, I think, uh,
I don't, I want to take a title I didn't earn there. I was the artistic director for the Ink People under the, uh, genius executive director leadership of Libby Maynard.
Very important to get that right because Libby's a colleague of mine too. And yeah, I appreciate the work that she does there. So thank you for correcting that. Uh, and then also obviously you worked with Kinetic. So from Scrap Humboldt to Kinetic to Ink People, just so many ways to interpret this. But how do you see that working? How does the arts drive our economic community here?
Um, well, we could take something like Kinetic Universe, which is the nonprofit that runs a Kinetic Grand Championship. It's all volunteer run. And it got started, so Kinetics started in Ferndale in 1969 when a, an artist named Hobart Brown got into a friendly rivalry with his buddy and they decided to race some sculptures and neither of them won the race. Um,
I feel like we need old timey fiddle music when we listen to.
Yeah, I remember talking about, get the, get the silent movie score going on. So here's this guy who lives here, cause it, in Humboldt, you know, cause it's a lovely place to live. And cause, you know, he could probably buy a big building for cheap in the middle of some cow town somewhere and he could do his own thing there. And then he started this fun kooky thing that the community took on and embraced, and it grew and grew and grew out of the creative fertile, the fertile creative ground of Humboldt County. And,
The weirdness in the,
The weirdness. Yeah. Well, it's a unique attitude, you know, we've got, and we have this unique resource in our wonderful, beautiful, pristine, gorgeous playground of a backyard. I was just talking to somebody at the co-op today about pedaling, uh, their kayak, the pedal powered kayak, pedaling up and down. And they said that they go out to, um, on Wednesday evenings to watch the sailboats race. It's like every week there's a sailboat race in Humboldt. I did not know that.
Now, yeah, Nate's making a face. We're like sailboat race every week.
In, I think he said Wednesday evenings. I'm sure we can find out, but they go and they do a little loop in the South Bay and they come back. Anyway, sorry. Side trip. But basically Humboldt makes these things for us because we love it. Because we are like creative weirdos who like to go outside and play and other people want to experience that. Other people want to hear our music and see our plays and watch our kinetic weirdos throw themselves down sand dunes. Uh, and they want to see our murals and they want to eat at our restaurants and they want to go to a place that isn't paved over and coated in plastic. And it's harder and harder to find. There are wonderful little gems everywhere, of course, but there's so many people who live in, what is it? Like tiki-taki boxes, you know, right off the freeway. And to go somewhere that is, um, that's just genuine, that's, um, fun and interesting and easy to get to and relatively inexpensive and in this beautiful backyard where they can go hiking and stuff like that also. Like creativity and our culture, our arts and culture is an infinitely renewable resource. We don't have to give anything up to build that, to get people to come here and enjoy their time with us. Um, but it's not just tourism. Of course tourism is great, you know, we're, we're on the way to a lot of places. More people are doing vacations in, in the state or within a driving distance of their home as opposed to flying nowadays. Um, and, and that's fantastic. Of course we, we love tourists. Um, and when your town has more murals, when your town has decorated utility boxes, has public, yeah, when we've got sculptural playground equipment for the kids to play on, when it's walkable, when it's safe, when you can find a house also. Um, but when you, when you, when you have a place that's a pleasure to live and a pleasure to walk around and there's stuff to do and there's concerts free on the waterfront on Thursday. And there's a chocolate factory downtown that gives away free samples. These are, this is our arts and culture that makes us want to live here, that makes more better people. Uh, not better people, but you know, more folks, um, who are looking for a good place to live, want to live here. And that's an economic driver, quality of life, uh, community pride. You know, when I can look at the, um, you know, I give this lecture to the Rhodes Scholars about the value of public art. And, um, one of the examples I give is how art can bring things to the forefront of our mind that would otherwise not be there, especially public art. And every time I walk past Brian Tripp's mural, the sunset twice on the people that day on the side of the Clark Museum, and it used to be up by the Morse Graves. Um, and I think about the, the tragedy that happened. And, um, then I think about the poem and I think about watching him read that poem. And then I think about the city of Eureka going out in front in our country and being the first municipality to seed land back to the Native Americans from which it was stolen, returning to Lohut Island. I can't help but think that that mural played a part in that, that Brian, as an artist, as a poet, kept that story alive outside of his family for us, for me, who just some, you know, random white chick from Texas. Like I knew the story more than I would have otherwise because that mural was there, because that poem was there, because that art was around. And then I think about Almy Allen's benches on the waterfront entitled The People Return, which is a celebration of the return of Tullowatt Island. And it has those wonderful traditional, um, they're, they're made of cement, but they're, they're, uh, stools made in the, the style of the redwood stools. Um, and that's on the waterfront there. And there's an informational sign there. When you're sitting on that bench, um, in a graphic representation of the spiral of the universe that has been restarted by this act of healing that the city of Eureka engaged in, you're sitting on that bench and you look out and that's Tullowatt Island in front of you. And that utilizing art, that the fact that that is, um, it's part of our experience. It's part of our, how our community deals with itself, how we, how we acknowledge our, our hurts and our joys and how we deal with them, how we move forward with what we think should be happening because of our impression of the world. And the artists are such a big part of that. Um, that makes this a good place to live. That makes this a healthy place to live. That makes Eureka a city that is willing to look at the past and say, this happened and it never should have happened. And we can't stop it from having happened, but we can do something now going forward. And we can do that everywhere, not just in response to, um, you know, 130-year-old tragedies. But we can, we can do that now with, you know, folks in the neighborhood. Like we can, we can help and we can go forward and, um, I'm, I'm going to get off into like arts. I'm going to go to my soapbox about just like art as, um, not just an economic driver, but a cultural driver, as a, a human driver, as an evolutionary driver. Uh, it was an artist that invented the alphabet. It is an artist, artists are the ones who create the language to communicate things that we feel, but we don't know how to say yet. When a, when a musician comes up with a chord and everybody goes, oh, that, you know? I feel that. I hear that. I get that. And then they come up with words for it. And then they come up with ideas based on those words. And then we come up with actions based on those ideas. Uh, I like to say if art, if, uh, life is a cake, art's not the icing, it's the oven. It's how we get stuff done. So, you know, the fact that this community values art, the fact that, um, we put so much into it that we, we get a lot out of it. And, uh, it makes it, this a, a better place to live, a more engaged, a more responsive, a more progressive place to live.
It's across the bay, but they just put a cool mural, I think it's on an Airbnb. Uh, but it's the three gnomes and they're doing hear no evil, see no evil, speak no evil. And I was sitting outside eating an ice cream and I watched some folks, pretty sure they were tourists go by. And to a person, every single one had kids and all the kids just started doing that. They just, they'd stand in front of it and they would do that. And I thought, I was thinking to myself, if that weren't there, they'd just be walking down the street. And I don't know that that's like world changing significance, but when it comes to like engaging with space and being present in a space, like it's, it's a cute moment. It's a precious moment. It's an adorable moment. And it is there because art gave us gnomes, you know?
Gnomes. Well, and like, look at the utility boxes.
I love this one. I really do.
How many people, I was, I was at the Ink People.
And ugly.
They're necessary and ugly. And so many people go like, I didn't even notice there was utility box there until somebody painted it. How much of our environment is just invisible to us? Cause it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
And we could just put some heart on it.
Yeah.
And the utility box is a really great example of arts as an economic driver, because I'll tell you how that started.
Yeah.
Somebody wrote a grant, I think it might've been Libby Maynard, um, to get a, a grant from the California Arts Council to put a relatively small amount of money into, um, paying a human being from our community to have a job. And that job was to find businesses that wanted to pay for a utility box and find artists that wanted to paint them.
Sponsorship kind of deal.
Right. So there's this little bit of seed money that came from a grant that came from the, uh, probably the California Arts Council. Uh, so state level grant that's also, you know, drawing from the NEA. Um, and, And that paid for a person to have a job. So somebody got a job, it's a part-time job, you know, but it's a job. And then they coordinated the efforts. And then over 150 utility boxes got painted. And over 150, and that means 150 jobs, paying jobs for local artists. Which means that there's 150 local businesses that are willing to pay for that. How cool is that, that we live in a community where that many people want to support the arts? Want to support infusing art into our daily life in the form of decorated utility boxes. I mean, what a frivolous thing. But here, all, now there's all this money. You know, it's from our community, it's moving around our community, artists are getting paid. Uh, graffiti is reduced, more people are walking around and going to businesses near these utility boxes. Altogether, it is a benefit for our community. It started from a tiny little bit of seed grant money, but it's driving that, um, that, those dollars to move around and to move around locally.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's just one example of how we can leverage our, um, arts and culture funding or arts and culture engagement into benefits for our community.
Yes, like city beautification is such a good example where every small business in the world knows if that box is on that block, you want it to be nice. If you're a nice shop, you don't want a big weird concrete or, you know, metal box sitting there and,
Sure. And all the better if somebody's gonna, uh, stop and take a selfie in front of it with your business in the background and then go get a cup of coffee because they happen to be standing there.
Yeah. It's such a great project and it's one that you really do see the dividends. I think the dividends are paid back to the community in so many ways. We're kind of running out of time here. The two questions we wanted to throw at you at the end. What do you have to say to folks that are like just totally apathetic about politics right now? Like what's the point?
Apathetic about politics, I completely understand. No, I think, I think ultimately you've got to, um, kind of an idealist. I feel like it's everybody's job to put their gifts at the disposal of humanity. Like it's your job, it's our job to try and make everything better for everybody because we're all one big family here. So, you know, maybe politics are your thing, maybe they aren't, maybe, uh, you know, you're good at, I'm not even going to start guessing, but you're good at something. Figure out a way to make the world better for everybody using that something that you're good at. Whatever your gifts are, give them back and you'll get them back again tenfold.
Yeah, you can really broaden that definition of politics and just,
Yeah, well, And then, you know, um, as far as like, from kind of like media selfish point of view, if you could pay attention to what's happening before you're ticked off about it. Because these processes and things, they take years and years. I'm going to be taking flak next month for something that was decided two councils ago. For something that was, somebody came up with an idea, they came up with a proposal, they wrote a grant, the grant has been going through and the funding and this and that. And the studies had to be done and the plan, the RFPs had to be put out and the proposals had to be weighed and the grant had to be rewritten and the fundings had, you know, all this, whatever. Takes forever.
Now it's your fault.
And now, folks who have not been paying attention this entire time are going to hear the first of it. Where public input was back when the plan was being drawn, before we had to get the permits and buy the stuff. And now it's too late. Or, and you, you can, just so much effort can be wasted when you get up to a certain point and everybody's like, what? So that's all I would say is just skim things every once in a while and notice, notice when it's happening in your neighborhood and get out in front of it and complain early. Because we do public comment, we do public input on everything. And that public input gets incorporated. When we say like, hey, there's a charrette, you know, or here's a town hall, notice those words and pay attention to what they're talking about. And if you care about it, go then, don't wait until they're breaking grounds. That's my, that's just a favor I want. Because I think people will be much less frustrated because their input can be incorporated in the process. They can decide what something's named or, or, you know, how, how things are going to go together, how money is getting spent. But not if it's already so far down that we're past that part of the process.
Sometimes the angriest people are the newest people to the conversation and they need to just kind of check that and realize that this is ongoing and
Sure.
Kind of get in when the decisions are being made. Uh, what would you say to people that are really interested in politics and want to get involved? What's like the biggest single piece of advice that you would give them?
Didn't I just? Pay attention.
Same thing to both populations.
Yeah, no, yeah, and join a, I mean, yeah, if you're apathetic about politics, do some good in some other way. You know, but try and pay attention to what's happening around you. If you're excited about politics, then yes, like pump that energy into something boring. You know, I think most of the work, we get a lot of, um, conversation on council or about council about like, I don't know, things that upset people or something, but the majority of our work is talking about sewer laterals. It's, we're talking about, you know, the budget for the Joint Powers Authority. We're talking about like, that it's the, it's the nuts and bolts stuff that nobody wants to do. That's if you're really enthusiastic, jump in there. It's like, I run, I run a summer camp and I clean the bathrooms. You know, and because it's like, that's, I don't mind, I don't care. Everybody else is grossed out by it. And it's like, I can help, I can do that. And then if everybody else is much, much happier because they don't have to clean the bathrooms and because the boss, the quote unquote boss is cleaning the bathrooms, then all the better. So if you're really enthusiastic, go join a really boring commission.
I respect a boss that cleans the bathroom, I'll tell you that much.
Yeah, yeah, people get worked up about, or people get caught up in like power structure stuff and it's not useful. When I ask my staff, we, we take a moment and, um, ask each other for support on something specific. And I ask them, I'm like, I need you to be honest with me. I'm, I'm confident, I give a lot of speeches, but that doesn't mean I know everything. I really need you to not let me walk off a cliff.
Well, Katie, thank you very much.
Thank you. Interesting note to Lima.
This has been the Civic Union, a collaboration between Access Humboldt and the Department of Communication Studies at Cal Poly Humboldt, uniting the people of the county with their representative government and community helpers. Thank you again to our guest, Katie Moulton, uh, for Ward Two of Eureka, California. Thanks also to my producer Nate Dogg here in the studio for his, all, all of his collaborative efforts and for the stress and anxiety that he was put through tonight. We will be back on August seventh, talking with Kimberly White from the Arcata City Council. Up next is one of my favorite shows here on KZZH. Certified animal behaviorist Charlotte Pelz gives you tips, tricks and tools to make it work with the roommate who poops in the kitchen. It's living with your dog. Thanks for listening. Hit unify.